Good evening and welcome to tonight's Community Town Hall hosted by the Jefferson County Board of Commissioners. I'm Amber Reese and I'll be helping to facilitate tonight's discussion with Commissioners Leslie Dahl Kemper, Andy Kerr, and our newest Commissioner Rachel Zenzinger. We'll also have several other subject matter experts joining us. If you're interested in enabling subtitles in another language, you can do that at the bottom of your screen by selecting closed captioning and your preferred language. Tonight, we plan to focus on three main topics while also answering questions submitted by the community. Those topics include next steps for allocating revenue retained after the passing of ballot measure 1A, wildfire mitigation and preparedness, and the impacts of recent federal executive orders on Jefferson County. We want to invite you to submit any questions you might have tonight. Although tonight's discussion will focus on those three main topics, feel free to ask about any county issues important to you. If you have a question, submit it in the chat. Please be mindful, you do need to join us via a computer to submit a question through the chat. Our team will make note of your question and you will be called on to ask your question. So please submit your question in the chat now if you already have one and you're also welcome to just listen in. Before I hand it off to Commissioner Zenzinger to begin tonight's discussion, we want to survey those listening on several county-related subjects. To participate, please click on the answer that you choose. Survey question one, how would you prefer to attend upcoming county town hall meetings? You have three options, the first one being in-person only, the second one hybrid, which is in-person and virtual attendance options, and the third being virtual only. Please, please select your answer now. We'll have a few more questions throughout the town hall, so please stick around to make sure your voice is heard. And with that, I'll turn it over to Commissioner Zenzinger.
Thank you so much, Amber. I appreciate it. I'm Commissioner Rachel Zenzinger and I represent District One, the north area of the county that includes Arvada and parts of Golden and Westminster. This is my first virtual town hall with Jefferson County as a commissioner. Our first topic for tonight's town hall discussion is the passing of 1A and our next steps for allocating the dollars retained. Now, the passage of 1A allowed the county to retain revenue to help fund critical public services, including transportation, infrastructure, and public safety initiatives. This includes everything from road and bridge repairs to wildfire mitigation, mental health programs, and crime prevention. And we are really excited about the opportunity to collaborate closely with county leaders as well as the community as we work together to thoughtfully and strategically allocate these resources. Throughout this process, we remain dedicated to transparency, accountability, and inclusive decision-making. That's one of the reasons why we have both an internal steering committee to guide the process and an external community committee to review the use of those dollars. Both groups will play a vital role in ensuring that every dollar is used strategically, reflecting the needs and priorities of our community. And so with that, I am pleased to have us joined tonight by our Chief Financial Officer, Dan Conway, and he's going to provide just a little bit more insight into those next steps. Just as a quick reminder, if you do have a question, please submit it in the chat. Thanks, Dan.
Thank you, Commissioner Zenziger. As we've been discussing with our community for a while now, the county continues to face financial challenges. That's why we need to be very strategic and intentional with our budget and these dollars specifically. The county has already made cuts within the general fund totaling sixteen point one million in 2020 and approximately eight point seven million in 2021 to slow the rate of spending. These reductions impacted essential public services such as public safety, roads, and more. Although these past cuts were significant, they did not fully address the gap between our allowed revenue levels and the cost to provide services. In our continual efforts to address this challenge, the county was prepared to make even larger spending reductions in 2025. But thanks to the support from voters, we are now able to retain more revenue that helps close that budget gap.
So Dan, I think, and I've gotten, I've received this question from constituents. Could you please explain how budgeting this year will be different in comparison to previous years due to this 1A measure?
In prior years, any revenue that fell above the annual revenue limits had to be returned to taxpayers, even though those dollars were vital to providing services to the community. The inability to retain those resources year after year forced the county to delay transportation projects, reduce service levels, and focus only on immediate demands. With the passage of ballot measure 1A, the county is now able to utilize those dollars to support our critical public safety, transportation, and infrastructure needs, and begin focusing on strategic and long-range efforts. In other words, this retained revenue will better enable the county to focus on providing effective and efficient services to the community rather than finding ways to reduce or eliminate them.
So the big question then is where will those funds be allocated?
Well, after the passage of ballot measure 1A, the voters have authorized the county to retain revenue collected that would have otherwise fallen above the revenue limits established by Tabor and other statutory revenue caps. This measure does not increase taxes, but allows the county to keep and allocate those funds already collected, including revenue from property taxes, state grants, and a variety of other sources. But to be clear, these retained dollars are not a blank check to be used however the county wishes. The passage of 1A represents a mandate from the voters to use these funds for transportation, infrastructure, and public safety. We're talking about supporting road repairs, bridge maintenance, and other infrastructure projects. The funds will also be used for public safety to enhance wildfire and flood mitigation, mental health programs, and other public safety initiatives.
So then, how does your department plan to execute how those funds will be allocated? Slightly different question.
Yes. Well, as with all appropriation decisions, the Board of County Commissioners has the ultimate authority to determine the county's use of the retained revenues. This is carried out through the annual budget process, which evaluates requests and recommendations from staff and other county leaders, and of course, is subject to the requirements of ballot measure 1A. Further, the board has recently created the Budget Retention Advisory Committee, or BRAC, to annually review the county's revenue and earnings in accordance with the terms of ballot measure 1A. This committee, the BRAC, will review the annual use of the retained revenue and report to the board. And an independent auditor will also review the retained revenue and how they're being utilized.
Well, I appreciate you highlighting how that review committee will operate, but we also want to be transparent and clear about our plans for those 1A dollars and how they are being spent. And this kind of helps remain as, keeps us accountable to the committee, I should, community, I should say.
That's correct, and this is an external committee and we are encouraging community members to participate. We want the community to be better or to be actively involved in this process and help ensure that the retained revenue is being spent according to the intent of the 1A ballot measure.
Well, I really appreciate you joining us this evening. Do you have any final thoughts?
Yeah, I just want to say that in my mind ballot measure 1A represents a clear signal that the voters are entrusting us with their hard-earned tax dollars to provide these critical services to the community. I'm confident that no one at the county takes that responsibility lightly, and we are all committed to reciprocating that trust by being transparent, judicious, and innovative with the use of these dollars.
Well, thanks again, Dan. I really appreciate it. If anyone who is joining us this evening has a question, just as a reminder, please submit that in our Q and A function. And now let's take some time to address questions and concerns from the community. I'm going to turn things over to Amber.
Thank you, Commissioners Zenzinger. We have a question from David Brooks. Please step up and ask your question. David? Okay, I will just read the question. This question is from David Brooks. He said, "The home insurance situation is dire, at least here in Valley High Foothills. Is there a regulating function like an insurance commission, and what can be done to make home insurance affordable?" Does anyone want to take on that question?
Yes, Amber, thanks so much. This is Commissioner Leslie Dahl Kemper, and David, we want to thank you for your question. You know, when we talk with our constituents who live in our foothills communities in Jefferson County, areas like Conifer, Pine, Evergreen, and more, this is an issue that we hear loud and clear. We, it's a top priority for us. One of the areas we'll be discussing in just a moment is wildfire resiliency in Jefferson County, and we'll have some strategies from Brian Keating, who is our Fire Management Officer, on how you can build greater defensible space around your homes and other tips to ensure that you're doing everything possible to protect your home from wildfire. The Commissioners were very active this legislative session regarding two to three bills that looked at this issue of homeowners' insurance and how we can reduce homeowner insurance rates. One of those bills passed, which will be very helpful, two others that would have created enterprise funds for hail damage and also wildfire. And by the way, as you may know, hail damage is extraordinarily huge here in Colorado and drives up those rates along with and coupled with wildfire resiliency. But please know that we're, we're doing a lot in the area of forest improvement, mitigation. We're also expanding our, our fire management team, and all of these efforts should also help address homeowners' insurance. I serve on the Colorado Fire Commission as one of two county commissioners. We are also tackling this issue and we work very closely with the Colorado Insurance Commissioner, Michael Conway, who held a series of community events and has even spoken at some of our town halls, in fact, just recently, as earlier this year, on the issue of homeowners' insurance. So we'll continue to advocate on this issue. We really appreciate you bringing it up tonight.
Thank you, Commissioner Dahl Kemper. The next question is for Commissioner Zenzinger. Someone asks, "What are the Commissioner's priorities for using 1A dollars?"
I can take that one. This is Commissioner Zenzinger. I can't speak for my colleagues, but I do know that we've had several conversations over the course of the past couple of weeks where we have dug in to try and figure out what would be the best use for these dollars. In particular, a couple of things have risen to the top of that list. I would say our, we are very concerned about our wildfire response. As you just heard from Commissioner Dahl Kemper, we have a lot to consider with regard to the WUI, which is the wildfire, wildland urban interface. I'm not sure if it's wildland or wildfire.
Wildland urban interface?
Wildland, okay. Why, the WUI as we refer to it. And, and, and we're very concerned with our potential for disastrous wildfires here in Jefferson County. So I do believe that that is a big priority for us, just making sure that we have the right infrastructure to be able to respond to any kind of disasters as well as put some efforts into mitigating and preventing wildfires from impacting our, our communities. So I do believe that that is an area that we are looking into. Secondly, we have over $600 million of unfunded transportation projects in the county. So very clearly, the 1A dollars would not be able to catch us up on over $600 million of unfunded transportation needs, but that is definitely a priority for us. We want to make sure that we are paying attention to our road and bridge safety, making sure that we have good connections in the community and that we are exploring all of our options when it comes to our transportation infrastructure. And then lastly, we are very mindful of making sure that we are looking at where are the, the options of the greatest need of our community. Right now, we have had a number of federal projects that could potentially be rolled back. And if that's the case, then we want to make sure that we are prioritizing those programs so that we can continue to fund them. So for example, just recently, we, we heard that one of our FEMA grants for wildfire, for example, could potentially be rolled back. If that were to happen, then obviously this would be a good opportunity for those 1A dollars to step in and try to help maintain that wildfire programming. So those are the, the top three right now that we are looking at. But we're early in the process and we are still interested in hearing from the community on what they believe our, our greatest need is here in Jefferson County.
Thank you, Commissioners Zenzinger. This next question is for Dan. Someone asks, "How much money is this expected to be in 2025?" referring to those 1A dollars, I'm assuming. How much of those 1A dollars are we expected to be able to use or see this year?
So we, we do know the figure that we're anticipating to have been retained from 2024, that we are exploring strategic uses beginning in 2025 and going forward. That figure is roughly around $75 million. The dollars that we would be potentially retaining in 25 for years, for use in years 26 and beyond will likely be half of that. Early estimates are indicating an order between 30 to 40 million dollars. There's a lot of variable factors that contribute to how much can be retained each year. One of those factors is the Tabor limit. While 1A does allow the county to retain revenues above those revenue limits, we still need to calculate that factor and that will determine how much can be retained. Unfortunately, that figure can't be really known until that year has concluded. So we won't really know that true figure until likely spring, late spring, or early summer next year. That will enable us to determine that figure for 25.
Thanks, Dan. We have a question from RA. RA, do you want to unmute to ask your question? Okay, I will just ask the question for RA. "Why doesn't Jeffco have any homeless shelter or other support? We desperately need this. Lakewood is doing its part and our other municipalities are not doing much." What is Jeffco doing?
RA, thanks so much for the, the question about homelessness in Jefferson County, and it is an issue that we take very seriously. And it's not only an issue that we work on city by city or countywide, but it is truly a regional issue. And we're happy to have with us this evening the Director of Jeffco Human Services, Mary Berg, to share a little bit more about the work that we're doing. For example, Jefferson County has set aside prior ARPA dollars to help fund those two navigation centers, one in Lakewood and one in Arvada. We also offer motel vouchers during extreme weather and lots of other strategies as we work to create a safety net of services to help unhoused individuals in our community. Mary?
Thank you so much for the question, and I would just echo Commissioner's sentiments that we all deeply care about all residents in our community. And we are actually working on a regional approach to address those who are in need of housing security through a comprehensive way. We have also completed a 15-year housing continuum plan, and we have several work groups that are part of our heading home efforts to develop strategic plans and strategies across the county. Each of our large municipalities, along with Jefferson County, have homeless navigators to assist those who are in need of temporary or permanent housing. And we do recognize that we have some gaps in our services and are working collectively across the region to ensure that we're developing the appropriate strategies from prevention to intervention and overall housing.
Mary, thanks so much for that response, and I'll also add that the Commissioners approved additional funding for an emergency shelter, a mobile shelter that can move around the county based on need during extreme weather. But we will continue to collaborate and partner with mayor, city council members, members of our community to ensure that we're helping everyone in our community. Thanks again for the question.
Thanks, Mary. We have Heidi on the line. Heidi, do you want to unmute to ask your question about property tax bills? Heidi, are you there? Okay. I will ask the question, Heidi's question. She says, "Our property tax bill was not lowered in January 2024 like it was supposed to be, and the state sent out a notice. How much in property taxes in terms of regarding the mill levy rate for the 2024 bill?"
Thank you for the question, Heidi. This is Dan. The property tax bills are going to be largely dependent upon the assessment that's done semi-annials or twice a year, I'm sorry, every other year cycle. And so those are largely going to be determined upon the market value. If you do have concerns about any increases that you've seen in your particular assessment, we do encourage you to participate in the, the application process to request a reappraisal or in fact, reevaluation is the word I'm looking for. That way you can get your factors taken a little further consideration in that process, and they can reevaluate if that is the appropriate level for that tax rate increase.
Thanks, Dan, and thank you for everyone for submitting your questions. We're going to move on to the next segment, and then we'll have another opportunity to ask questions live. First, we're going to do our survey question. Survey question number two. "In what ways are you most likely to engage with your local government? In-person, virtual town halls, social media, direct phone calls, or emails, or other?" Please select the answer that you find most fitting on your screen, and we'll have one more question toward the end of tonight's discussion, so please stay with us. And now Commissioner Dahl Kemper, I'll turn it over to you.
Great, thanks so much, Amber, and thanks again to all of you for, who are joining us tonight. We appreciate it. I'm Leslie Dahl Kemper. I represent District Three. That's South Jefferson County, and it includes Littleton, Morrison, Conifer, Evergreen, and portions of Lakewood. I'm also one of two county commissioners, as I mentioned a little bit earlier, appointed by the governor to serve on the Colorado Fire Commission, and I chair the Jeffco Wildfire Commission. Together, we've been working with our community, first responders, forest health experts, water specialists, county leaders, and others to reduce wildfire risk. And we'll talk more in a moment about the factors in Jeffco that make fast-moving wildfires harder to contain and really require us to think in new ways about growth, development, forest health in the wildland urban interface, or WUI, an acronym you've been hearing a lot about tonight. We also know that there is no single solution to address wildfire risk, and it requires all of us doing our part. That's why we're taking a collaborative approach in Jefferson County with the help of the Jeffco Wildfire Commission, major initiatives like Together Jeffco, and much more. I'm pleased to share some positive news with you all today. Deer Creek Canyon Park has partially reopened as of this past Thursday following the damage caused by the quarry fire. As you may know, the fire burned more than 580 acres. That's about 35% of the park's total area, and that was prompted by immediate recovery efforts, and we want to thank everyone who was involved in that, in those efforts. In fact, Commissioner Zenzinger, Kerr, and I were able to see that work up close and were part of that reopening. Those recovery efforts included fire suppression activities, necessary trail repairs, removal of hazardous dead trees, and the restoration of areas affected by severe to moderate erosion. These efforts were crucial to ensure the safety and health of the park for both visitors and wildlife. Jeffco Open Space secured more than $353,000 in funding. This is through the Emergency Watershed Protection Program, and this funding has supported critical work. That work includes helicopter mulch and sea drops to help prevent further erosion on the most severely burned slopes. And we also had the privilege of being onsite to witness the hard work and the dedication of the Jeffco Open Space staff, and it was truly inspiring to see the recovery process in action. We want to thank them and all of the partners who were involved in getting this park open well before the original two-year deadline. It opened, partially reopened about two-thirds within, I believe it was about 10 months. So incredible, incredible effort by the team on that front. As we celebrate this milestone, I kindly ask our community to respect the partial reopening of Deer Creek Canyon Park. While it's wonderful to see the park beginning to recover, it's also important for everyone to remain mindful of the sensitive areas that are still in the process of restoration. And Jeffco Open Space urges all visitors to stay on designated trails to ensure their safety and to protect the delicate natural resources that make this park so special. Thank you for your support and cooperation as we continue on the recovery of this beautiful park. And a quick reminder, if you have a question, please submit your question in the chat. We're joined this evening by Brian Keating, Emergency Services Fire Management Officer with the Jeffco Sheriff's Office to provide expert insight into wildfire preparedness and what proactive steps you can take to help us build greater wildfire resiliency here in Jefferson County. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Brian.
Thank you, Commissioner Dahl Kemper. As we head into the height of a wildfire season, our risk of wildfire increases. The Jefferson County Sheriff's Office Emergency Services is heavily engaged in wildfire prevention and hazard mitigation to reduce unwanted human-caused ignitions, damages, and losses caused by unwanted wildland fires, unnecessary risks to firefighters, as well as suppression costs. The Sheriff's Office is focused on preparedness with activities planned and implemented prior to a wildland fire occurring. One new way we are doing that is through our SIM table. Jefferson County Sheriff's Office recently acquired the SIM table, which is a high-tech sandbox that allows first responders to simulate fires and train in real time. The SIM table also allows crews to train in a more realistic setting than ever before. So while it looks like a traditional sandbox, it is able to show firefighters what to expect on the front lines and to simulate any scenarios and explore different options on how to best react to those. We ask Jefferson County residents to help us with wildfire prevention. We recommend residents take hazardous mitigation steps to make their homes less susceptible to fire, which includes removing slash, such as debris from vegetation found in forest areas around your homes. The County Sustainable Lands and Safer Homes or Slash program also offers collection events for the residents throughout the summer who can drop off their slash for disposal. And the new 2020, 25 slash schedule and other information can be found on the county website.
Great, thanks so much, Brian. And you know, we really want to thank members of our community who have responded in a big way to removing slash, all that woody debris that fuels wildfires. We want to thank you so much for your involvement, especially in our foothills communities. And a big shout out to Jeffco Open Space and Jefferson Conservation District, who are partners in, in helping to lead the slash program as well. Brian, there might be some who are joining us tonight who are wondering, "Why is wildfire risk so high in Jefferson County?" Can you touch a little bit more on that issue?
You bet. So risk in Jefferson County comes from a number of different factors. It includes the type of vegetation or fuels, as we refer to them, topography, weather, fire history, including both natural and human-caused fires, as well as the values at risk, like things like homes, infrastructure, watersheds, and similar features. These factors are all modeled to show the overall fire risk throughout the county. And while most of our county ranks as high or extreme, we also do have some areas that are more in the moderate category. In addition, the large percentage of the wildland urban interface, or WUI, throughout the county where structures meet the wildlands is a major contributing factor to our overall fire risk.
Brian, we heard a little bit earlier from one community member who weighed in about the increasing cost of homeowners' insurance. And one of the things that we said we would do is sort of circle back and talk more with our community about how they can make sure they're prepared for wildfire season. And that certainly, some of those steps certainly help with the homeowners' insurance issue. But what, what's your best advice to people who are listening tonight?
So there's lots of things homeowners can do, but first and foremost is to be prepared ahead of time. You want to be proactive as much as possible. If you haven't already, register with Lookout Alert, which serves as our primary 911 notification system for residents when a wildfire or other hazardous events occur. In addition, prepare a go-bag, which can, can contain things such as important documents, medications, and information you may need in case of an evacuation is required. You also want to take steps to prepare your property and your home to be more resistant to a wildfire event by creating defensible- You also want to take steps to prepare your property and your home to be more resistant to a wildfire event by creating defensible space and home hardening measures. During a wildfire or evacuation event, try and remain calm and become informed. Be aware of alerts pushed out by Lookout Alert or Jeffcom 911 service. Search social media such as X or Twitter. Listen to the radio and/or check local news broadcasts for fire reports and evacuation information. Community managers can sign up for emergency notifications by visiting the Lookout Alert website at lookoutalert.com or by visiting the Jefferson County Sheriff's Office website. We have lots of links there, not only to Lookout Alert, but other resources and information homeowners can use to be prepared ahead of time.
You know Brian, I'm going to just go off script for a moment because we've got a question from someone who has concerns about wildfire response and has said that wildfire prevention and mitigation is their biggest priority, which we really appreciate. And they mitigate as much as possible, but some of their neighbors are not as concerned about prevention and mitigation. And I know our Jeffco Open Space team, for example, works very closely with private landowners to mitigate property, especially when that property abuts one of our beautiful open space parks. We have a shout out to our wildfire ambassadors who educate homeowners about the importance of wildfire mitigation. Is there anything that you would add in response to the comment that we had received from the community member tonight?
I would say become familiar with your local fire protection district. Just as the county recently completed an update to our Community Wildfire Protection Plan, all of our fire districts also have more localized community wildfire protection plans. And you can get lots of tips and advice and know where the risks are and find different resources to help you mitigate, to become involved locally with your community and to figure out what kind of resources and tools are available to you to help do that kind of mitigation work.
We're going to talk, I know, in just a moment about how the federal funding landscape could affect wildfire resiliency in our community. But before we go there, I just wanted to check Brian, if there's anything else that you'd like to add in terms of how the public can support first responders?
So it's always important to remember that during a large-scale disaster, responding law enforcement, fire, and emergency management services personnel are very busy taking action to prevent loss of life and property, which is always our first priority, as well as gaining control of the situation and mitigating its impact to the community. As a result, emergency personnel and resources may be spread thin. They may not be able to provide assistance for you and your family in a quick manner. Therefore, residents are encouraged to take matters into their own hands and be your own hero. That's a campaign that was started by the Jefferson County Sheriff's Office a few years ago, and information about that campaign can be found on the Jefferson County Sheriff's Office website. Rather than relying on the ability of law enforcement or fire personnel to rescue you or save your property during a wildfire or other disaster identified in Jefferson County's Hazard Mitigation Plan, being your own hero allows you to be prepared ahead of time and have the resources and learn how to be proactive, which ultimately is going to help first responders not only protect you, your life, and your home, but also be able to focus attention on the incident and try and contain it.
Thanks Brian. I know we want to get to questions. Thanks to all of you who are submitting your questions. We're going to come to you in just a moment. But before we turn to questions, I'm wondering if you can talk a little bit about the federal funding landscape for wildfire mitigation. And we also want to give a huge shout out to our Jeffco voters who approved ballot measure 1A, which includes, as you heard from Commissioner Zenzinger, a component related to public safety and specifically wildfire resiliency. And Brian, if you just briefly touch on some of the dollars, 1A dollars that we're looking at for this year to help with wildfire risk reduction?
You bet. So as many folks are aware, with the federal landscape right now, we are losing some funding opportunities in the form of grants and other related programs that support forest health, wildfire risk mitigation, and wildfire resiliency efforts. Because of those actions, we are expecting a larger burden on state, county, and local governments to meet these need funding challenges and be better prepared for a wildland fire and all hazard response. One of the things that we are doing is working with the ballot measure 1A to identify what type of investments will, would further county efforts to be prepared to assist residents with mitigation work and bolster our response efforts as well.
Great, thanks so much Brian. Are there any other updates that you want to share with us just briefly before we turn to questions? Again, just a friendly reminder, please put your questions in the chat. We're going to turn to those next in just a moment. Any other advice or resources that you'd like to share? You've been the lead, for example, on our Community Wildfire Preparedness Plan and more.
Yeah, as we enter the start of summer, I'd like to remind folks that May is actually National Wildfire Awareness Month. And I believe last week, the county commissioners signed a proclamation with Jefferson County recognizing that as well. So this is just another reminder and a great time for folks to get out and work on defensible space and home hardening projects, as well as review evacuation routes and procedures so that you're prepared ahead of time in the event of a wildfire or all-hazard incident. There are lots of excellent resources available to citizens for wildfire preparedness and wildfire risk mitigation activities. And I would highly encourage folks to become familiar again with your applicable Community Wildfire Protection Plan, or CWPP, which is created by your local fire protection district or fire department. Other sources of information could be found on the Colorado State Forest Service wildfire mitigation site, your local fire protection district or department websites, and the fire-adapted Colorado or FACO website, as well as of course, the Jefferson County Sheriff's Office Emergency Preparedness website. We all play a role in being wildfire-ready and we ask citizens to do their part so that first responders can be as effective as possible in responding to incidents and protecting life, safety, and the values that we all hold important in Jefferson County.
Brian, thanks so much. Appreciate your answering some of those questions on the fly as well. And we'll take some time right now to address questions and concerns from our community members. I'll turn it back over to Amber.
Thank you. Our next question is for Commissioner Kerr. Someone asks, how is the commission balancing limited water resources with what seems to be virtually unfettered growth?
Great, thank you. This is Andy Kerr, one of your commissioners here this evening. And yeah, water is, as the old adage goes out here in the West, that whiskey's for drinking and water's for fighting. Water is one of our most precious resources and pretty much our most precious liquid resource, which will actually be part of our next question we're going to take. But one thing folks should be aware of is that any new development or redevelopment must receive approval from water sewer fire providers separately from the county or municipality. So they do need to go to the water providers in their area to get those approvals. Also here at the county, we're doing everything we can to really encourage water saving. So policies that we have, buildings, developed areas, landscaping. We have many water-saving ideas that are encouraged. And also we look to our Sustainability Commission that brought to us the Climate Action Plan that the commissioners approved a few years ago. And the Climate Action Plan is not a set spreadsheet of just specifically what everyone must do, but it's more of a roadmap and plans that people can look at for ideas. Jeffco residents, residents, businesses, local governments can look at for ideas around how they can save water and how they can encourage their community, their neighborhoods around them as well. As well, much of the development that you do see happening in the county and in the municipalities within the county do tend to be more dense than projects before and tend to have less landscaping water needs. So as we move forward, in interesting fact, the population of Jefferson County has not increased as rapidly. And in fact, there are a couple of years in the past few years where it actually declined, but has not increased as rapidly as in the past. We're definitely looking for those places where folks are willing to do some infill denser developments so that future residents are just using less water than has been the case in the past.
Thanks Commissioner Kerr. This next one's for you as well. Are there any indications or efforts underway by the oil and gas industry to drill for oil and gas in Jeffco?
And I don't mean to be flip, but no. They're really, so the oil and gas industry obviously wants to go and drill where there is oil and gas resources and that are easy to find and inexpensive to obtain. That's not the case in Jefferson County. It's not to say that there are absolutely no oil or gas deposits anywhere within Jefferson County, but certainly not easy and expensive oil and gas to find. So we really don't find that. I will mention that there are many oil and gas businesses that headquarters or have branches here in Jefferson County. So we do know that there are folks in Jefferson County, some of your friends and neighbors here in Jeffco that do work in the industry. And we also have a lot of folks that work in renewable energies, putting those solar panels on people's homes and making sure that energy efficiency measures are easily accessible to everyone in Jeffco as well.
Thank you Commissioner Kerr. And we have one last question before we get into our next segment for County Manager Joe Kirby. Someone asks, I'm concerned about the huge development activity along the C470 corridor. Is there a plan to improve the capacity of roads in this area to handle the influx caused by this development activity?
John, this is Joe Kirby, the county manager. And one of the areas that I oversee is our Development and Transportation Department. And while I can't speak to specific development projects along C470, I can definitely share a couple of items with you that I would encourage you to follow up on after the meeting by visiting our website. I think the first thing to keep in mind, and this has been referred to in our conversation already tonight, we have a project that's ongoing and has been for the last couple of years called Together Jeffco. And Together Jeffco is a significant planning effort that we have undertaken to virtually overhaul many of our planning and land use tools. Brian mentioned a little bit earlier about the Community Wildfire Protection Plan. There's a number of other plans that fall under Together Jeffco, one of those being our Comprehensive Plan. And so our Comprehensive Plan is being updated. And the reason that that is important is that particular tool helps guide our future land use in the county. And as a result of that, what transportation is required. So the Comprehensive Plan is an important link and it directly attaches to our Transportation Management Plan, which is also being updated as part of Together Jeffco. So I would encourage you to follow our work on the Comprehensive Plan update, as well as our work surrounding the Transportation Management Plan, which does focus on future projects and needs relative to meeting transportation demand in the future. In addition to those items that I just mentioned, there's also our Capital Improvement Program. And that Capital Improvement Program is a program that we established about two years ago, which is trying to project our needs for at least the next five years. And as part of those needs, transportation and development are areas that are looked at very closely. As a matter of fact, our Transportation and Engineering Department has more projects than I can share with you that are on our Capital Improvement Program. And so that would be another item to connect with on our website is our Capital Improvement Program. And that Capital Improvement Program does have a comprehensive listing of projects throughout the entire county. I can't tell you how many of those specifically relate to C470, but that is a good place to check as well. And also feel free to follow up with me after the meeting and I can put you in touch with our Department Director over Transportation and Development. His name is Avell Montoya. And he can speak to you to specific transportation improvements that may impact the C470 corridor. Thank you.
Thanks Joe. Our next question is about wildfire mitigation. We mitigate as much as possible, but some of our neighbors are not as concerned with prevention and mitigation. Is there any actions that Jeffco is taking to ensure all mountain residents take the WUI plan seriously?
I'll take the question. So again, this is Brian Keating, Fire Management Officer. So yes, there are lots of discussions and plans being developed. But more than anything, you know, first and foremost, I would applaud folks for taking those proactive measures to mitigate risk on your property and around your homes. Many of our fire protection districts through their CWPP have identified or delineated their area into plan units. And as Commissioner Dahl Camper mentioned earlier, those plan units have community ambassadors. Those ambassadors are really the folks out on the ground, they're your neighbors, they get to know one another and able to encourage folks to take more of a collective approach to wildfire mitigation. So I would first recommend folks to contact your local fire district or department and determine if you have plan units and who your community ambassador is. Reach out to them and get engaged with them and see what kind of advocacy they can do or collaboration they can help facilitate so that there's more collective approach across the landscape. Beyond that, the county is looking at doing strategic risk mitigation projects that were identified in our CWPP. We have working groups that include multitudes of federal, state, county, private organization, collaborative partners, trying to figure out where we can be strategic on the landscape. And as we begin to implement those projects and folks be able to see the result of that work and the benefits of that work, we're hoping that will encourage residents who may be hesitant to start to take actions themselves. Beyond that, you know, every homeowner has the right to manage their lands. And so there's nothing that we can, from a regulatory standpoint, enforce other than when there's new developments and working through building codes and such. So it's more about getting to know your neighbors, encouraging them, and hopefully them seeing the benefits of the work that's occurring around them and trying to get on board with that.
Thanks Brian. Before we move on to our next topic, we'll take one last survey question. That question is, how safe do you feel in Jefferson County? You'll have five options on your screen to choose from. Please select your answer now and thank you for participating in our surveys throughout tonight. For our final topic, I'll hand it over to Commissioner Kerr.
Let's turn the mic on. I'm Andy Kerr. I represent District Two. And we're excited to welcome our county manager, Joe Kirby, who will be providing us, joining us to provide an overview of some of the recent executive orders. He'll also discuss how those orders impact our county and how we're monitoring any changes. And a quick reminder, if you have a question, please submit your question in the chat. Joe?
Thank you Commissioner Kerr. I appreciate your invitation to join you tonight. As many of you are already aware, a significant number of executive orders have recently been issued by the White House. In light of these developments, we are observing a growing sense of uncertainty, concern, and even confusion from members of our community regarding the potential implications and far-reaching impacts of these federal directives. At this point, it is unclear as to the exact impacts that the executive orders will have on Jefferson County. We are advocating, and in particular, I'd like to recognize the Board of County Commissioners, they are actively advocating for Jefferson County at the state and federal levels, as well as monitoring the situation closely. Despite this uncertainty, we will continue to provide essential services and resource. Despite this uncertainty, we will continue to provide essential services and resources.
All right, folks, welcome back. Had a slight technical difficulty there. Hopefully you are hearing us again now, and we're getting thumbs up on that. So Joe, thanks. Thanks for kicking us off in this section. And at this point, where do we stand in Jefferson County on equity, diversity, and inclusion?
Thanks, Commissioner. As you're Thank you, Commissioner. As you're well aware, one of our core values is equity, diversity, and inclusion. And Jefferson County will not waver regarding our core values. We will continue to protect and advocate for all community members, especially our most vulnerable neighbors. I'd also like to add that from my perspective, we're absolutely stronger together. While it is still unclear how the executive orders will impact Jefferson County, we are preparing for any outcome and will keep you informed.
Great, thank you so much. And I fully agree. Our strength truly lies in our unity. And here in Jefferson County, we may remain firmly committed to supporting equity, diversity, and inclusion. And any and all initiatives that will continue to stand by our employees and community members as we navigate these challenging times together. On that note, Joe, do you happen to have any insights or updates regarding how the recent executive orders might be affecting our funding streams or financial planning?
Absolutely. I'll also ask my colleague Dan to join in if he feels the need to color the picture a little bit more. But I can share with you that we have established an internal task force who is charged with tracking and evaluating each and every one of the executive orders and federal directives that have come about recently in order to determine the potential impacts on Jefferson County and our county funding streams. We've already seen some federal grants withdrawn. Most recently, we had a 5.9 million federal award that was terminated that would have provided dollars to stabilize a reinforced slope at our Rocky Mountain Metropolitan Airport. Instead, we will now need to use local resources in order to carry out that project. So that's the most impactful one that I'm aware of at this point. But we do have this task force that I mentioned before and that Dan is actively involved in and is co-leading. I would also say that we continue to monitor many other areas as well, such as critical funding for Head Start, supplemental food assistance, low-income energy assistance, COVID vaccination programs, tax credits for energy efficiency projects, and solar energy of our libraries, to name a few. And there's many more that I could also identify in terms of the areas that we are currently monitoring. The actual dollar impacts and timing of these potential impacts are yet to be determined. But with the efforts coordinated by our executive order task force, the county is positioned to be as informed as possible when and if action is needed to address these impacts.
Thank you, Joe. And let's get into some frequently asked questions from the community on the impact of executive orders. If we lose funding, will the county be able to continue providing our current services and resources?
Commissioner, as I shared earlier, we are advocating for our county at the state and federal levels, as well as monitoring the situation closely. We will continue to provide essential services and resources to our community and are in the process of identifying strategies to do that in the event that we do lose funding.
So what federal funding does the county receive?
That's a great question. We receive a substantial amount of federal funding. For example, in 2023, the county received about $105 million in federal revenue from approximately 130 different revenue sources. The county relies on these federal dollars to provide a broad range of critical services, such as food assistance, early childhood education, transportation safety, crime victim assistance, employment services, child support, medical assistance, emergency management, and preventative health services, to name a few. Additionally, in 2023, we administered about $110 million in direct federal assistance to our community. Once our 2024 audit is complete, we will be able to share more recent numbers for 2024.
What about this buyout offer for federal employees? Is that going to have an impact on Jefferson County?
While this buyout offer would have no direct impact on Jefferson County employees, any impact to our federal workforce who work at the Federal Center in Lakewood or elsewhere in our community would also impact our economy and community. Recently, more than 100 people were laid off at the National Renewable Energy Laboratory. And employees impacted by the federal cuts include some working out of the Enrel headquarters here in Golden, as well as remote workers based elsewhere. Presently, there are about 6,000 federal employees who work in Jefferson County.
Yeah, thank you for that. And having grown up here in Jeffco in Lakewood, many, many of my neighbors in Green Mountain worked either at the Federal Center or Enrel. And I think we all realize just how important it is for those jobs and what a big part of the county's economy they are. So things are changing. Oh. Actually, I think I'm supposed to ask you now for any additional thoughts you'd like to add.
Thanks, Commissioner. As I think most people are aware, changes are really occurring rapidly at the federal and state level. And the Board of County Commissioners and county staff are doing our best to stay abreast of these changes. We continue to monitor and identify potential impacts on county revenue and services. One of the ways in which we do that is through our executive order task force that I mentioned earlier. Residents can stay abreast of any changes impacting our county by accessing our Jefferson County webpage
Great, thank you, Joe. And if I, we're just about out of time, so we probably won't be able to get to any more of your questions in the chat. I am at the end here. We are going to tell you how to get questions to us, though. So at this point, I think we have time for one more question.
Yes, I'm going to go off script just a little bit here. So we'll get the commissioner's final thoughts. We'll start with Commissioner Kerr, and he also has a question directed to him surrounding RMA Airport. And then we'll go to Commissioner Zenzinger and then finish off with Commissioner Dahlkemper for final thoughts. Thank you all for your questions in the chat. Commissioner Kerr, several cities around the RMA Airport have asked the county to address the quality of life for residents living under the flight plan for the 150-plus daily touch and go flights a day. What has the county done to address this issue? Again, with your final thoughts?
Great, thank you. And I really appreciate everyone's time this evening and your thoughtful questions. And Jeffco has worked very closely with our surrounding neighbors and the FAA to come up with plans to make sure that the folks who live in and around the airport are being heard. And I believe that there are one or two measures moving forward that we'll definitely want folks to hear about and be a part of if you can. With that, I am going to turn it over to Commissioner Dahlkemper.
Great. Commissioner Zenzinger may have either a question you're responding to or some comments.
No, I think I'm just going to go ahead and wrap up with my final thoughts this evening. So I do want to address a question that was put in the chat by my way of exit this evening. And that is, what projects or initiatives are commissioners most excited for this year? And for me, I would say it would be the adoption of our 15-year strategic housing plan. I'm really excited about that. It was a unanimous vote. We adopted that plan back in February, and it contains a number of significant initiatives, looking at everything from homelessness to land use to affordability. And we have instructed our staff to take a look at that plan and to do a crosswalk with all of the different initiatives and points in the plan and how they intersect with all different levels of county government. All divisions, everything from our traditional planning and zoning division all the way to our Human Services Division, our Business Information and Technology Division, all divisions of our county government are taking a look at this strategic housing plan to figure out how they can play a part so that we can make sure that this plan is active, well utilized and implemented, and not just something that's going to sit on the shelf. So for me, that's what I am most excited about this year.
Great. Thanks so much, Commissioner Zenzinger, and thanks, Commissioner Kerr. If your question was not answered tonight, please feel free to send it to our Jeffco Public Affairs team at jeffco.us. Our Public Affairs team will work on tracking down and answer for you. I know a number of us were furiously typing as well, responses to questions. And you can also email commissioners on any issue that is on your mind at commish@jeffco.us. And on behalf of the Board of County Commissioners, we want to thank you for carving time out this evening to join us to submit your questions, and we look forward to continued conversation. I'll turn it back to Amber.
Again, if you didn't get your question or comment answered, please send us an email at jeffcopublicaffairs@jeffco.us. And to find the recording of tonight's conversation, we will have that on our YouTube, Jefferson County, Colorado YouTube page. Thanks again for joining us, and have a great evening.